And this is the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit.
It's our PR guy right here. He always has the wonderful. Yes. So we need a motion to sign the warrants.
I mean, can I second? I think I just did.
All in favor? You've got it. Okay, I'm ready for you. But you can go to the meeting so you can't lose it in. You weren't here last time, were you?
I wasn't there.
What do you do?
It was a double, it was a double tide. And I could make it back to town.
Where did you do?
It was a double tide.
Oh, that's right. And I actually, I told people that. I knew there was a double tide, the Irvine Clams. I knew that. I think there's one I'm missing.
I think on that particular day. It took three thousand pounds.
Thank you so much. Okay. Is there anyone entering? We didn't. We won our seat. What is this thing of the project?
That's something David Stockford handled.
Was it in other business or was it on the agenda?
It's under David Stockford, number seven.
All right. We, uh, I'll make a motion. Will you approve the minutes of June 23rd as written?
Oh, I said.
All in favor? Full business solar or any lease? Uh, that is.
There's three copies if anybody does have. Henry Barrett is on the line.
Yes. I didn't take mine home.
I think mine's in the car.
Because, well, see, that's something this one. And you know, I, I knew I didn't take mine home.
Mine is home.
I have looked at.
Well, good, then you can make the motion. I say, I say we put this on the town meeting and the warrant and let the town decide.
Absolutely.
Henry is, is on the line. He has some additional information you may want to hear about. Henry, you're on.
Henry?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Um, I'm sorry, what, what was your question?
Um, I thought you might like to update the change that you told me about this, the new law with the legislature that's kind of affected us here.
Sure, sure, yeah. Thanks for, thanks for having me tonight. Um, so it was, uh, late last week that a bill was passed in the, in the final hours of the, of the session, um, that will essentially put on hold the current solar program. And while they come up with a new program that they are hoping to put in place in starting in 2024. And they filled in some, some provisions that allow for older projects to keep moving forward if they have, if they reach certain milestones. Um, and the other way for projects to keep moving forward is if they stay below, uh, two megawatts, which is roughly 10 or 12 acres. And so, um, you know, I think the, the, the state kind of wanted to, to take them down the pack and, and see how the program is working, just given the amount of solar that's going on in the state that, you know, we've, we've all seen. And so they just want to kind of take a, take another look, make sure it's, it's, it's the, the right level of incentive. Um, you know, it's, it's sort of the right thing that, that they all want to do. And so they're going to start working.
Breaking up. Um, so I don't, it seems to me like this would be a report and shouldn't be on the warrant.
Well, they can still do nine or 10 acres.
Well, they haven't answered that and it would have to be revised. So, um, can you hear us?
Yeah, more or less.
Well.
Is it more or less?
So we would really need to have a revision of how this affects this entire proposal you submitted to us before we could actually take it to town meeting. So how, how does this affect? We're looking at a proposal that now is, is, is not effective.
Tainted.
No, I wouldn't use that word. So I guess you have, they really have to submit a new proposal. You really have to submit a new proposal and it, you know, we'll have to take it to a special town meeting. We can't do this today. We can't sign this. We can't put this on the warrant as is because it's, it's not, it's passed, it's not, it's not.
Right.
Current.
It was for 40 acres.
Yeah, you had it for 40 acres and we can't have something passed that you can't fulfill because you just had a bill passed a week ago that limits you to 10 to 12 acres. More correct?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so the two, the two potential paths forward would be to move ahead with a, you know, two megawatt less project that we could do, you know, starting, starting this summer. Or, um, you know, if, if we want to wait to do a larger project, you know, we could also just sort of start the development now with the intent of being ready once, once the new program launches in 2024 to do a, a, a bigger project.
Well, is your company willing to work with 10 to 12 acres in Lubac with the, um, with the, with the foresight of including more acres as 2024 approaches? Something like that? Are you, are you thinking that on those terms?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're certainly happy to do that. Um, and, and, you know, we would, we would very much like to continue to, to work on a two megawatt project. Um, the only, the, the, a potential issue there is if, if we do a two megawatt and then we wait, wait until 2024, you know, somebody else may come in behind us and, um, you know, take up more of a capacity at the substation and on the circuit. So there may not be, um, an opportunity to do another project down the road. Um, but at least, you know, giving that two megawatts on, online, um, you know, we could do that in the, in the near future.
Take a look at the article. It's open enough that it just gives you select board permission to enter into a lease agreement. It doesn't go into the nitty gritty of those.
And it doesn't, it doesn't say a lease agreement with this company?
No.
Oh, so.
Fifty-three.
So I, I guess if I was in your position and I was willing to do the 10 to 12 acre solar farm, with an, I would want an option to buy, or option to lease the rest of the land because I'd already put my monies into 10 to 12 acres. Does that, does that seem reasonable? See, I don't think you can hear us.
You're, you're saying, you're saying that, that we would lease, you know, as, as much land as we may need in the future and then just start on the two megawatt now?
Right.
To, you know, to, like to, like you said, you were afraid that you might, someone would come in behind you and.
If you're leasing the 42, does that give us them the feeling of obligation that we'll continue to work with it?
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to hear it, so. I'm having trouble. We're having a little trouble hearing you at all and I'm sure you're having trouble hearing us. So, um.
A little bit.
Seven one seven.
Well, we can, we can still do it. The Article 53 is written in a way that we can still present it to the.
I don't, but we, he, even though the select board, if he can get permission or enter into a lease, I think this is a big enough project that the town would need to be part of anyway.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So we'd have to have another town meeting. I suggest, if it's okay, if, what you, how do you feel about this? That you go back to the drawing board, knowing these new rules and, and tweak your proposal in such a way that will benefit both yourself and the town. And, and resubmit it.
Assuming a, a two megawatt project.
Well, is the, is that what, is that all you're able to do? Is that what you just said? That's all the government's allowing you to do now is a two megawatt project?
Yeah, so for, for the immediate near term. Um, so for like, for, for right now.
But it could be expanded on. It could start with a smaller project and get larger as the 2024 approaches, right?
Yeah, so, so, so the, so, so we could do that. Um, a, another option, and I know the town plan doesn't want to wait this long, but, you know, so we could, we could start on the development work now and submit stuff, you know, our application to the utility, which would secure our spot in the line and aim for a, you know, 20 acre, 25 acre project for 2024.
And the, and, yeah, I understand. I guess you just have to rethink the whole thing and submit it to us because you've been, the parameters of your business have been curtailed by the legislative decision last week. So.
Well, so, so I guess the, the, the question, um, for, for the town would be, would you like us to, um, you know, try to do a larger project aiming for 2024? Or do a, a two megawatt project and, you know, we could start work this summer and, and assume, you know, that would come online much sooner than, than 2024.
Doesn't change the article.
No, but I'd also think if, if we're obligating to, or trying to obligate to a 2024, wouldn't there be a commitment on their side for leasing of that property prior to 2024? Because I would assure you is nobody coming, as you were saying, somebody coming behind you.
Exactly. You're stripping.
We can leave the article as written and then just, like you said, put it back out to bid or put it, you know, have them submit another proposal and then you guys can decide.
My thought is go ahead with the 12, 12 acres.
No, I was, I was stable.
Then add on to it later.
If you go in with something starting this summer and we accept the 12 acres with the, with the idea that you're going to expand it to the appropriate amount of size by 2024, would that sound reasonable to your company?
Yeah, we, we could, we could fairly do that.
But is that your, would that be your best choice to do? I mean, we're, we're not in the business of solar farms. That's your expertise.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's, and we can, we can definitely do that. Um, and then, you know, if, if there's still capacity available, once we do the two megawatts and then, if there's still capacity available at the substation come 2023, you know, we could apply for another two megawatt project or however fitting it is under the new program.
Makes sense. I, I think we want to get into the solar, um, business at some point. We do want to, we, I think we, the town is interested in. Well, we'll find out, we'll find out August 4th for sure, but it doesn't even specify. So I think that that's the select board anyway. Let's vote. We'll make a motion that we would like to go ahead with the constraints of the new legislative, uh, body's position in Augusta and that we would like, what is the name of this company? Nexant? Nexant? Uh, submit a revised proposal to us to, for the select board to review. Uh, that includes starting sooner with a smaller sale and then adding on.
Was that a motion?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that was a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Jason.
That was an awful long motion.
I was like, mm-hmm. She got the gist of it.
Yeah.
So there we go. Thank you very much. Sorry about all, you know, stuff happens, right?
No, thank, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
See you, guys.
Carol, motions, proceed. The Nexant proposal conforming with the state.
Yeah.
Seconded by Rachel.
Perfect. That was just a wordy way of saying it. Thank you very much.
Elodie's not here, you can skip. She was not able to.
Line boards and warrants and watching official. Okay. So who wants to make a motion to sign the warrant? There is a. There is an addition to the warrant that you might not see.
There's a couple, actually.
Okay, couple.
The Marion Transfer Station Article 13. Uh, the last bill came in today, which was in the old year, so that amount had to go up and therefore over expended the Marion Transfer Line. So in Article 52 is all of the departments, which was that one and the harbor that went over. And the harbor one will be reimbursed by that grant.
Yes.
So the only department that went over was the Marion. If all the other towns departments stayed within their budgets this year.
Except the Marion.
Except the Marion. And we're going to blame that on COVID. A lot of people were home cleaning out.
I thought we were going to blame it on Jason.
It was an $8,000 bid, uh, bill that came in today from Marion, so it really threw it over. So, um, those were the only two things. And then that last page that I printed, it was a loose page of the, uh, was the addition that Carol was about to tell you about.
Yes.
From the Shellfish Committee request.
Right. This one here that we're adding one Article, Article 58 to see if the town will vote to increase the limit for the Shelter's Conservation Fund from 5,000 to 10,000. That will allow, right now, they have more in it than their, that will have to be moved and they want to be able to have a, um, a larger amount. But Amanda will be at the town manager to explain that. I'm, we're not going to deny them to put it in.
So I just need to add, uh, change in the greetings Article 1 through 58, not 57. And I can change that without anything affecting anything tonight.
So this, this is, that's fine with me. Do you, do we need a vote to have that Article 15 put in?
No, you're, you're voting on everything.
Oh, voting on the whole thing, including that, okay. So who would like to make the motion to accept the warrant as written?
I would, uh, make a move that we, uh, accept the warrant as written.
And do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
And also, uh, motion to sign the election of obituals.
And, uh, I would like to move that we sign the election of obituals.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, so what, do you have the original warrant? Is it, oh, this is just the same as your page?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want us to do it twice? Oh, it's two different.
One's for the election and one's for the warrant.
Was black okay? Did you want to see it blue?
Black.
Okay.
Here, Jason.
I mean, your real, your name wasn't good, real name. Who was it that did that one time? Somebody, somebody assigned to the wrong line. We won't say who.
I think I did.
It was Rachel.
I think I did, yes.
I thought we were just going to want it Jason.
For everything.
Administration report, okay.
I knew a while ago, um, I think it was Dan that had asked that I do some reports monthly. Um, it's kind of late for me, but I've included in your packet here from December to June. And what it is, is the printout of the tally of, um, transactions that we've done each month. And you can see when our busiest months are and our slowest. And this doesn't include all the phone calls and things like that that we deal with all day long, but these are the counter transactions.
So that's nice. I love that. It's very good.
Tells you what we collected.
That was your, that was your thing you want to dance.
Yes.
Nice.
To this for you.
Any questions?
This remains the.
Well, we know that. Very lucky to help her. So in June, there was no motor, motor vehicle registration at all? But why is number one says one count?
Oh, one is a correction account. Ninety-nine is the motor vehicle.
Oh, so one is a correction account.
One is for if there's a problem, then we can go in there and do corrections.
Oh, you don't.
Like the.
I knew you'd have the answer to that. Very good. All right.
What's a suspense account?
Suspense is where it's just like it says, you, you don't know where to put it. So it's just a holding place.
I thought it was a TV show or something.
We put it in the sewer proposal.
Yes, actually, actually, I got an explanation of that today. I was talking to Suzette, Suzette, and she told me when we were discussing shellfish and how they were going to be able to maybe get a little, a skip for the warden, that there was $3,884 from community foundation in the suspense account. And I'm like, okay, so now, because they, it hasn't been spent on what it's supposed to be spent for, so she's got it held there for them. They, they have a project that that was designated for and it hasn't happened yet. They were building, um, crab, they were building, uh.
They just always.
Did you just get it?
I literally just snuck it.
Well, that's what I thought.
So that project is actually designed, we were able to do the experiment end of it, but the cost on that was pretty much nonexistent because we got a lot of donations for supply that we need. But that money is to be used to build 50 green crab traps. So anybody who's had a Lubac license for two years will receive one of those green crab traps. And part of our conservation is eventually going to be that if they bring, if they bring in two five gallon buckets of green crabs, they get two hours towards their conservation time. And each five gallon bucket is about 30 to 35 pounds of green crabs, about 20 green crabs a pound. So, once you start adding that up times 50, we could actually pull somewhere around 1,200 pounds.
And what are we going to do with the green crabs?
We're going to kill them. Kill and get rid of them because they are agents.
I, you know, I've always suggested that you convince the Asians that they're an aphrodisiac. And you could damage the economy.
You want to know a, a thing? There is actually a market for soft shell green crabs in Italy.
There you go.
But the problem is, when they tried to get it Massachusetts to do this, no one was interested. We're talking about people with the population of Massachusetts and not a single person was interested in doing soft shell green crab. In Italy, soft shell green crab that are about this big sell for $26 a pound.
There's a market.
Sounds like a market to me.
I think you contact.
The problem is, is getting it there.
You have to contact somebody at the Italian Embassy or my friend Vito from Providence.
Because all they do is they take them, they dip them in batter and sell them like chicken nuggets.
Check the Fleecy Room and they might want to compost.
Cause for me.
Yeah. They'll take them as far as if we wanted to get rid of them. I already worked that out. But as far as doing something feasible to spark a market, they only want to pay $7 a yard.
Can't you parachute them out when they're, when the urchins are going to, to pay?
I'm content with just sending them back to Italy. That's where they came from.
What, what, maybe? Is there no market here for green crab?
The problem is, the markets are anywhere from four to 10 hours away. It's cost of doing them. The problem is, nobody wants to pay any more than 40 cents a pound. So then, once you pull out traveling costs, that, and whatever other costs.
It's not cost effective.
It's, they're, the dig, the harbinger gets nothing. Um, but if you can find some isolated bait markets, because down in Massachusetts and Connecticut, they're actually used to go out to potagas, which is black sea bass. They're actually bait and they'll at least pay 50 cents a pound. But you've got to have a large enough of a quantity to turn around and make it cost effective to get them down in Massachusetts.
And that's what it means, working them, right?
They'd sell them on the street like chicken nuggets.
Not necessarily on the street, restaurants. Restaurants actually pay a good price. But the problem is, when you get soft shell green crabs, they have to go straight on ice and they need to remain on ice until they are dead to be shipped over. Because you give them any more than two days, the shell starts hardening back up and they're useless. So there's, there's a lot more to it than just simply shipping green crabs out of the state.
Well, thank you very much for explaining what suspended.
International culinary expla- explanatory.
I think you should go talk to Vito.
Vito.
All right, now we have your shellfish warden.
It's just an announcement to the board and the public that Sheldon Lyons did fulfill the state required training and is a full pledged shellfish warden, which means he's able to issue some of those.
Wonderful.
Great.
So I, I think that while we're on shellfish warden, I, I believe that Amanda had come to, uh, you voted last night to purchase up to, um, spend up to $1,500, which I found out can, can come out of your shellfish reserve, the overage that's in there now. Um, to pay for a skip and a trailer and a little motor so that shellfish warden can go to the beaches that all the, that many, let's just say, that if you don't have a license, you're more than likely to run off to a beach and big clams where the warden can't get to you. This is why he needed a boat.
In Lubac, we have the most flats in the state. And we can only patrol half of them. Because a lot of like South Bay, Maranco, the only place, the only way to get through to there is to actually hike a couple miles through the woods.
Or have a boat.
Or have a boat. So.
So she's come to us to authorize that expenditure, which I believe is the last one.
What's to be.
Should, uh, support.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
I move that we financially support Amanda in the purchase of a skip to pursue her duties or.
Pursue for the welding.
Sheldon.
Sheldon to pursue his duties.
Do we have a second?
Which fund does that matter?
It's coming out of the shellfish reserve, which is at, which right now has $6,409.
Trailer.
Up to 1,500. Up to 1,500.
I found a couple that only need minor repairs, but.
Who's the deputy warden?
There isn't one.
Oh, I only have one.
Well, luckily we have a selfless one. It's really hard.
I considered doing the deputy warden. I really don't want the job, but I would be willing to do it just as a backup plan. So all our eggs are not in the same basket.
Is she allowed to be a deputy warden and also be chairman of the Shellfish Committee?
Yes. Because Louis Pinkham, who actually runs the class for it, is a clam warden, is chairman of his town and does the class. So if he can do it, we should be able to do it.
Oh, absolutely.
My question is, you're willing to do it?
I would be willing to do it. I was going to do it a couple of months ago, but I would never have had enough time to get the booking, the bookwork done to take the class.
But if you make a deputy, if we appoint her deputy warden, does she not have only one year to pass the test? Or do, do they not have to pass tests as deputy warden?
You, she would work under Sheldon.
I would work under Sheldon.
She put in summons, but Sheldon can.
Did Sheldon have any, any say over that?
When I talked to Sheldon the last time around, he had no problems with it and fully understood why we were going about it in that direction when we had the conversation. I'm like, I'm not stepping on your toes. I am literally doing this in case something happens to you. We still get to keep our ordinance because we are for the state for clams and.
Yes.
We, we, our ordinance is important.
I'll make a motion that we make Amanda Lyons deputy warden, shellfish warden.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor? Did you go to, you didn't go to the meeting, they didn't need to, they had a form.
You can do the computer.
I'm going to volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah, I just knew I was going to be able to do, I knew I was going to be, they'll do 200 hours in like six weeks.
Very good. Okay, American Legion invitation to dedication was even more. So in your packet, there's a little handout. Bubba came to me and asked if any of us could attend. And we had made a, we've already signed a, have we not signed a cert?
We, not with any.
No? Well, we need, we need to.
Do a plaque or something.
No, we need one of those dedications that I took to the, you know, the Lyons Club.
Oh, we already did it for him, for his family, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I thought. We did that, right? What day? Did we just do one?
Yeah. Oh, no, I think.
I need, I need take that. He's already asked me to.
We've already mailed it. We, I mean, that was when it passed. We, we did all that. You did that once.
But we'll have to do something else. Anyway, they want, he wants a swiss.
I can make a copy of it. I can make a copy of what you did.
Okay, that would be good. I can't remember what it says. You're very good at it. County vote so.
This is something we do every year. Um, the county invites us to join in their salt purchase and we get a cheaper price. They put it out for bid and.
So we just agree to.
Yeah, there's a form for you to sign. It's in the packets of stuff for you to sign.
Here it is. Full purchasing highway.
And I will be putting the salt, I mean, the sand bid out as soon as town meeting is done and make sure the town raises money for salt, I mean, sand.
So, do you have a motion?
How much do we have left? You know, salt and sand and that.
I don't.
Tons of salt required, date of salt to be delivered, salt delivery location. How are you going to answer that? It's all on this form here.
Oh, I'll get with Ricky. Oh, right there, it's on a letter. Estimated is 200 tons, received 166 tons. So we must, we.
Well, you'll fill it out. I just, I just did that top part. So do we have a motion to sign the bulk purchasing highway salt provision?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? So here we go. I think you'll only agree, people. Okay, Jason, right. Slipping on either side. Very good. David Stockford, you're finally up. Where is this?
Right here.
Have you fallen asleep? Have we put you to sleep?
No, 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 no. It's all exciting. I spent with the shellfish committee last night. We did more than that. Thank you to the town.
Yeah, that's exciting.
We're beginning with some thank yous. One is to our select board in the past who instituted Zoom. Who would have imagined the impact of a pandemic on our having public engagement without it? I think you experienced it and I have on the outside of the look at the technology where I think additional mic could be used. Oh my God. But the park enhancement has been just amazing. I want to recognize some volunteers, Mary Aldani. And she, at the support of the Roosevelt, Campobello, and it is a park, but so we made a connection with them. Bobby Case, Trudy McDonald, Margaret Stockford, and Paul Warren. And everyone raised about how laser looks, so it's really important. And the town public works is superb. Particularly Kenny, who doesn't regularly, but if he knows this event coming up, he gets down and moves it the day before. So it's really been a system and it's a great means of meeting our match, which we've done far in excess. So the good news is that we have an opportunity to extend for yet another year through June 22 so that we can complete the program. And we've had great support from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. And I made draft a letter for you to send to them because it's been really amazing. The purpose of it is to engage people and that was not really possible during, during the pandemic. But I think the partnership piece is important and it's already continuing to grow. I mean, last night, hadn't approached them, but they were discussing at the shellfish committee meeting last night, having a clam bait. So I offered Stockford Park and there were great response. So I have a new partner just last night. And I'm feeling very positive about it. The other piece is that we have the school and with the assistance of the forester, we're gonna be able to get spruce seedlings for the students who are in the summer program. So, and that I hope we'll be able to convince, continue every year and to get those available. The other important piece is that we had not anticipated, and I applaud your decision for reduction, rich reduction with the monument and removing other trees. I know it was difficult, but they were aging and in talk with them that they were deteriorating. I hadn't included enough, but I think if I look at my bids, which we'll share with you around the trees, that we'll be able to start repli- replacing the maples. Yeah, so I think that's gonna be really exciting.
The sumps get removed when it does.
But that's probably why they notice that they're gone.
Well, that is really good, but you know, there's no summer program for the children now. They don't have it.
Uh, well, there's one at school.
There's something.
There's, yeah, they have, they have workshops coming in and, oh.
No, actually, they have the kids in the building three days a week or two hours a day sponsored by the school. I just learned that setting up for the women's day.
Thank you. I didn't hear.
There was kids in the library and I asked, um, and they have.
Oh, good, good.
Two, two hours, uh, three days a week, 10 to 12. And I was like, maybe, maybe it was 12 or 13 kids that I had down.
Okay, great, great.
But something.
Yeah, so there was something.
Well, yeah, that's, that's good. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, that really is it. Uh, I'm hoping that you'll continue to support it. And I think we're required to do something with the warrant.
Yes. Nothing like what? The warrant. Do we need, do we have a warrant for this? I have to add. The warrant's already done.
I think it was just for the continuing.
You have to authorize the expenditures, whatever.
Of any grants.
Oh, that's already, that's, that's already done.
Done, dear. They're all set. Appreciate it. Melissa.
Okay. Well, I talked to Renee the other day. I am here with my library hat on and I'd, I'd like to read my little proposal and then if I can afterwards, put a, take my library hat off and put my Maine Coast Heritage Trust hat on for a quick 30 second request.
Okay, we're timing it down.
So I wrote this up, uh, every Wednesday morning at 10:30, the Lubec Memorial Library holds Wiggles and Giggles, a preschool storytime. Today, there were 17 kids and 11 adults.
Wow.
Um, it has been very popular. It was put on hold during the pandemic shutdown. Starting in June, it resumed and is being held outside under one, one of the large maples on Pleasant Street. These are very young children and last week, one child darted into the street. There were no cars coming luckily. The library would like to get permission to shut down the portion of Pleasant Street between the town parking lot and the corner of Pleasant and School Street for about an hour each week. It's a distance of about 120 feet. Cars traveling on Pleasant Street can detour through the parking lot and cars wanting to turn on Pleasant Street from school can easily go around. Ideally, we could borrow four traffic cones from the town to place in the road. The only dwelling impacted belongs to Mary Stewart, who supports this action. And how often is the storytime? Once a week on Wednesday mornings. So I have an aerial photo of, um.
I know what it is.
Well.
I saw him out there this morning. They had a sign up.
Exactly where it is. And I have signs that say, street closed for Wiggles and Giggles. It's not a bad thing, you know?
I mean, Ricky, Ricky.
He knows what people would be doing for wiggling and giggling. Everybody out of the car, wiggle and giggle.
Ricky will come down.
Sounds like a really nice program. Really nice. Yeah, we don't want kids in the road.
No.
No. And it's the, you know, the, it's a slope and up by the road.
You can't see it.
Is level and in the shade. And right now, while we're still in the late pandemic stage, we're holding it outside.
Yeah. Good.
Well, for blank and giggles, I make a motion that we could be.
I second.
All in favor? Yeah.
So Ricky will just take care of it?
Well, you, well, I don't know.
He might have to do with the cones.
Yeah, he probably can do the cones and then you can just put them out when you start.
So should I come up or go find him and get them? How should I deal with that?
I'll need tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll get your cones before next, before next Wednesday. You had it today, right?
Four would be fine.
Two on each day?
Yep. Yeah, we had it today.
Ricky's got a sign too. I mean, if it were up. We dug across some coals. He was awesome. He shut the road right down. He had a sign.
I think that Ricky can't, the public can't just remember 10:30.
Yeah, no, right.
So you will have to be responsible for it.
Yeah.
And this is just for summer?
Well, until it gets cold and they can't be outside anymore. Yeah.
Now, there is a huge amount of construction going on at the end of that street. Is that going to affect like a large truck coming down? Oh, so they could turn down the parking, they could turn down the parking lot?
Yeah, they would.
And their major truck should know. Yeah, they're working down the key, so they're almost.
Even that house. That's quite a, quite a, quite a, a house.
Yes. Well, that's a, that's a barn.
That's their barn?
Basic barn.
That's a barn. I know the guy that did the foundation there.
Windows are.
Well, and the barn and solely, who's, that was gonna be in the barn?
I can upstairs.
Oh, a barn with a.
It's beautiful. It's all posted.
It looks lovely. Okay, so, okay, now you get something that's Maine Coast Heritage.
Maine Coast Heritage Trust. So on Boot Cove Road, the Boothead Preserve, if you're coming from Dixie, you come around a curve and the road is completely broken up in front of the parking lot because the snowplows break it up or whatever. And to pull out, what people do is kind of try to skirt around it, which means you're on the wrong side of the road around the blind curve. So I would just request, I, I know work is being done on that road anyway this summer. So, um, so maybe.
Probably in the fall, but they could probably have it.
Okay.
Maybe we could fill it in some more.
Pardon me? You better get to it again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Too gentle than over there against the bar.
You know your mind, you're Rachel. That's not a bar.
I don't wanna throw water on the freeway, but I think you should check with, uh, you're, you're closing a road. You should check the DOT about what the control and sign that you're firing at the bar could be. Otherwise, you may create some liability.
It's a state road.
It's a town road.
I mean, it's a town road.
Town road.
It's a town road.
If you cover it up, you're gonna have flaggers to direct traffic. You can't just block and say, go around it.
Well, what do you do when you're on road, you close roads all the time? They don't have any flaggers.
It's like construction.
Yes, you have a. Well, I think before we speak, we should get rules and you're absolutely right.
I just took the class, Carol.
Let's check the rules. Oh, okay, you just took the class of closing roads?
On the thing.
Okay, well, just say.
Flagger details. Anytime you put a, a, block a road and put a manhole cover, open a manhole and you put a barricade up around that manhole. You gotta have somebody on each side of it directing traffic around it.
Well, there you go.
I, I would check.
Well, thank you, Kim. I, I think it's a good point because you know, once someone all of a sudden turning right coming down School Street, not knowing there's cones and they're just driving into the cones. Because they, they won't see them.
And, and if you have to do the parking lot, what's, what's say the kids not gonna block into the parking lot?
My, my main point is you don't wanna create a liability or a confusing situation.
So I, let's, we will revise our motion to say that we approve of the closure for the Wiggles and Giggles after investigating all rules and regulations. Sure, we abide by the rules and regulations that we have, that Gary has pointed out. Thank you, Gary.
You all agree?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have. We'll see what it is. Well, one of the parents that are, do they drop their children off and leave them or do they stay?
Oh, no, they stay.
Well, then they just have to volunteer to stand there and make sure. They might, that you might work it that way, that you could have one of these, they could take turns. So that for the safety of the kids. I'm just thinking that would be an easy way to get somebody to just kind of watch it. I mean, I did the marathon security for one street for seven years. I know what it's like there on that corner.
See, there you go. They didn't just put signs up. They had you manning it.
That's right. Well, I didn't need it. I had people manning it.
Somebody had to.
But I didn't know, I didn't know the rule. We were pretty much manning it so nobody would go straight through into the, you know, driving crew. Well, we'll figure it out.
I thought you were running it.
No, I could, I, I hardly made it through the fun run. A main hill nearly killed me driving on a main hill. Let's see, we were with these little kids and one little kid had to stop and take a little rest, break on a bush. And then the other little girl had to pick flowers. I mean, it took forever to. Sewer abatement.
Um, account number 416500 had a leak. And so it made their water readings higher. It did not go through the sewer system. It was not a water leak. Kind of not within the toilet.
So it's 2503?
So, yeah.
So we need a motion to abate this water bill for 2503? So moved. Second.
$25?
Yes. All in favor? You don't. How good is this? All wrapped.
This came in this week. I figured I'd throw it on here. It's something we do every year. It's the money that we receive from the state to help maintain our roads. We're, um, we're set to get $37,128 and you have to sign this form.
Have we need to fix it?
Not a problem.
Yeah. It did come up from $34,424 from last year.
So I'll make a motion. We sign the local road assistance program. Have a say on it. All in favor? $37,700.
Uh, the next item is the, the tax acquired deed. Um, the payment has come in this week, so I thought I'd throw this on. It's just for you guys to sign this.
The one on, uh, 401?
No, this is the one out on, um, the black, where it may off.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they paid in full. Um, I will need a witness also. John, you've witnessed before in the past. Would you serve as a witness on there and then I'll memorize it tomorrow?
Okay, we have signed it first.
Yeah.
Um, we make a motion to sign the proclaim D.
Motion to sign the proclaim D.
All in favor? What's going on? So this happens, this particular proclaim D has everybody's middle initial. You must put your signature as its type to make it legal.
Do we have any pen issue or?
No, no pen issue. It's just you have to.
Do we have to recite what our donors just answered?
I think we're gonna write, let me recite that. What does it stand as middle initial? I'm gonna tell you. Daniel S. What does it stand for?
Seth. S E T H. That's mom, dad.
What about you, Jason? What does, what does P stand for?
Peter.
What? Peter? Okay. Sign D. You didn't have to answer, you know. All good now? Sign D, that's a, sign message. Uh-oh.
We have a message.
Okay, here's the message. This, I'm sorry, this is all I could think of. I couldn't really think of anything with this to say. So if you don't like it, someone else will have to write, read it, but it has to be in on Friday, right?
This is for the town report.
It has, it has truly been an exceedingly difficult year for our community and our entire country. We are proud of each and every one of you who took the time to look after their neighbors in this time of extraordinary isolation. The pandemic was an eye awakening experience for all of us. As we begin to put this all behind, let's start a new beginning together as one community cherishing this beautiful piece of land we call Lubec and the waters that surround us. As you walk through town, you can see the start of new buildings being built and the refurbishing of the old ones, old and cherished ones of the past. We would like to thank the town employees that stood by their jobs during this time. While adjusting to the many changes in policy and procedures, they were still able to conduct the business of the town and its citizens. Thank you, Renee, for heading up this complicated year, along with Suzette, Debbie, Penny and Patsy. Ricky for holding public works together with Timmy and Nikki and Bruce for working on the sewer upgrade and Kenny for keeping recycling open. So, does that mean your approval? I didn't put any of this, thank you for that. Thank you, Gary. I didn't. You want me to review it?
Can you just add Gary and Jim in there?
No, I, it's on my computer.
Do you have Gary and Jim in there?
Well, what about, what about Ralph and, you know, what about the shellfish warden and the animal control warden and all of that?
I include them in my report, if that helps.
Oh, okay. So Renee's got you covered.
Perfect. So are we ca- okay with this?
I'll make a motion. We sign that one and rely on Renee to do it. There we go. I'll second that one. Which one? Just keep Peter out of it.
Did somebody motion? I missed it.
Yeah.
The motion did.
Your motion, Jason did. I need a second.
Second.
You're right, but I could have just spent the whole time listening to the second question. Those are the full time employees. That's the distinguishing difference. Full time employees.
No sneaking.
I'll quit answering my phone.
What?
I'll quit answering my phone.
Don't, don't you dare. I have no updates worthy of the committee updating.
Well, there you go. Um, I do have an added, uh, let's, I do have one I have to stand, one to ask for. It's been over a year since we negotiated with the wood, the woodholders for the red house and I would like permission to try to renegotiate because we're about ready to lose that property to go with the safe harbor because the business is, uh, Grant is taking a lot more time for the permitting than. Because of COVID, they've never even been out here, but we're nearly to contract.
Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
Okay, I would move that we, um, agree to have Carol renegotiate this property.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Now, committee updates. Amanda, you're here. Do you have any update?
I just want to say, Amanda. Well, last night, we spent pretty, it was, it was chaos, but that's how our meetings usually go. But we went through our whole entire ordinance from top to bottom, got, did a lot of housekeeping, got rid of gray areas. We are increasing the stigency of our residency because the way we have it in our ordinance actually is the weakest in the state as far as proofing residency.
Do you, I didn't get a copy of the ordinance or the changes.
It's not done. She just got it to me today, but I can put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
I, what I, way I worded it in the, in the warrant is exhibit one. So we have to have the drastic ordinance date. You can review it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, yeah, come on.
Yeah, so I mean, instead of just needing your driver's license and swearing that you've been here for three months, we are actually asking driver's license with a Lubec address on.
we are actually asking driver's license with a Lubeck address on it and at least one other form of proof. And we give a list of like 15 things and we're giving them a year to turn around and figure it out. So it's not like it's gonna catch anybody off guard or anything. I mean, if you can't come up with some kind of electricity bill, I mean, how else would you really?
Well, I think they should have Lubeck license address on it because isn't it by state law?
Well, the other issue we're having, the other issue.
They don't do it.
But they, but they need to.
That doesn't mean anything. Like, we have a bunch of younger guys that turned around and moved out of town, but their driver's license still says Lubeck. And we can't turn around and question it further because they're providing the proof that we require.
Right.
So, and they're moving to Cutler. And of course, everybody should know that you need to change your address within 30 days or it turns your driver's license practically invalid. But these young kids, they're not taught that. They don't know. And if they can use it as a loophole, they're gone.
So you're requiring another proof of residency besides the driver's license?
So they can do anything from a bill to showing an address on a bank statement. I mean, we're giving them a wide range of things to cover. They can give us a lease agreement.
Is that gonna go in the ordinance?
Yeah.
Is that the only change in the ordinance?
No, we also turn around, we have, we, every year, we have an issue with selling licenses around July 1st because it always conflicts with the holiday in one way or another. So what we ended up doing was, we are, we wrote in our ordinance that you have five business days after July 1st to get your license. But in order for us to do that, we had to extend the expiration of the license from the year before to cover those five days. So if you have had a license the year before, then you're covered. If you don't have a license, you're not on our flats until you do.
That makes, that makes total sense.
No gray area, nothing.
If you either have an extended license from the year before or you wait five, or you get it the first day.
Or you get it the first day and cannot be on the flats until you do.
Makes total sense to me. That's it? Those are the two changes?
Um, other than that, we also, um, changed some things on, uh, suspension of licenses and how we're dealing with that. As of right now, it goes, if you have three convictions, you lose your license for 30 days. And then after that, the count starts over.
Three convictions?
Three convictions. So if you get three fines from a town warden, you lose.
In how many days?
It does, there's, it's not cumulative, so it's in career.
You get three, you lose your license?
You lose your license. But once you lose your license and pay your reinstatement fee, it starts over. So they won't get another punishment until.
Three more.
Three more.
How long is the, what is the punishment? It's only 30 days?
Yes. I couldn't get them to budge beyond that, but.
It doesn't seem like very much of a.
But depending on the month of the year, it can, it can hurt. When it's.
At $4 a pound.
At $4 a pound for 30 days.
But you have to have three. What happens the first time?
Well, what we added to this was if you are caught with small clams over 25%, which you're only, by state law, allow 10. Or if you're caught in a pound conservation closure or fail to obtain or refusal to obtain a license after a warning, it is automatically 30 days, no argument.
Okay, so it's not three. So what would constitute a minor infringement?
They're all, there's no warnings for anything. They're all solvable.
They're all solvable.
They're all solvable with a $300 fine each, which is.
Yes, so you can have three $300 fines and then you get suspended 30 days?
Yes, if we're talking about something like, they only had peanuts, but they only had like 12% peanuts. It would count as the three, one of the three convictions. But they have over 25, it's done deal.
And if somebody doesn't sell it, it's $300?
Yep, and we.
The judge has to decide.
Oh, the judge.
We also add it that if the state pulls their license, so do we. Because if you can't sell your clams, there's no reason for you to be digging our clams.
No, I agree.
And we also add it, um.
Can we say that again, please?
If the state pulls a license, we pull it too.
Then you have to. Not the same as if they don't have a license, we can't refuse to sell.
Well, are you gonna keep traffic down there?
I am working on an agreement with Heidi as far as how we get that information from the state. So if they're caught in, it, because I actually work pretty well with Russell. So if, we, we talk back and forth, so I can make arrangements as far as how we will get them.
Well, the state should tell us then, right? They should now tell us that they pulled their license.
Yep, we just have to put in a written letter to the state requesting this information.
I figured you were on.
Yeah. And the last thing we added was, um, aiding and abetting. So say somebody turns around and illegally sells somebody else's clams because they don't have a license, they lose their license for three months.
Person.
Play, the person has sales.
The person that sells, makes sense to me.
To turn around and solve that issue too, because we had so many gray areas in our.
That's fine. I'm gonna draft it, the orders, and send it to your attorney.
Okay, good.
Yep, but these are also things that were actually taken from other town ordinances, which gives me the confidence that we should be.
Proudly allowable.
Yes, and I've already sent it to Heidi and I got thumbs ups from her.
Oh, so then maybe we're good with it.
The ordinance, I don't really press around with that, trying to make sure that we sound, trying to propose a new ordinance. Is there anything else?
No, I think it looks pretty good there.
Do you need a skip trailer and a small engine that might need just a little work? Oh, we already proved that. So she's a great committee.
Yep, we, I kinda already found one.
She comes with her own.
She's a great deputy.
I kind, I kind of found one, which is like $1,200. And all it needs is wheel bearings and a car clean, which is not anything major. Literally maybe a couple hundred bucks in repairs.
Okay, and it's right in the back?
No, it's not, but.
And they get it.
I, yeah.
Well, we're out, I think, you know.
We'll look around before we decide on one.
All right, so we have any other committee updates? Nothing?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for. Any news on that?
Well, I'm working on the Biden executive order on social to social cost of greenhouse gas emissions, emissions. And I spent the last two days calculating how many CO2s are going into the atmosphere from a loader, a backhoe, a barge, a dump truck, a pile driver, a tugboat. And, and then calculating the cost of it all. It's like something new they threw on us at the end, so I'm looking on that. And that's supposed to be, that's it, because after that, we've got a draft agreement that's being reviewed, so we're moving along. Yeah, I think if you run into trouble, you can always tell them that we got by the effluence out of our waste treatment water, the recycled water is not good at cause damage. So why would the carbon emissions do that? Uh, I, geez, I don't know. But.
I'm wanting to get a solar.
Well, we're using solar lights and pit toilets and we're doing all kinds of environmental things for them.
Redoing air with new maple trees and.
Fifty pages. Those aren't going to be red maples, are they?
Right.
Red maples?
What about?
No, no, I'm sorry, David's.
Actually, they look hard, but I'm, we're open.
What's wrong with them?
Mr. Forrester, looking very helpful. It's supposedly hardy.
Yeah. I, I, I just think red maples are not a very good tree, or the root system.
We'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take that up to the.
Oh, I can say to the Harvard board that they're, that Pete has nearly completed the upgrades of the commercial pier. It's just been hard to get materials and we need to clone him because everybody needs Pete.
Well, I know a guy that was down there at 3:00 the other morning setting all the packages.
Was that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I know that you have to work around the tides. Amanda?
I also talked to the guy who was doing the repairs on the boat ramp down there, and they're scheduling a power wash the lower half of it at some point later in the summer.
Because it's getting slippery or something?
It's quite slick. I took a couple falls this year already.
Really?
Yeah. Luckily, they were all graceful and slow-mo matrix style, but. Still.
That's not good. I wasn't aware of that. I never ended up getting down there.
Oh, yeah, it's slick, especially if the tide just came off of it. It's slick.
That doesn't happen when you get older. You just flop and you don't get up.
That's right.
Yeah, even though sometimes I still have to plan how I'm getting up if I make it to the water.
Yeah, so we need the crane ones. Are you talking about the ones at the end?
Yep, the ones at the end that are covered with algae.
So do we not, we cannot do that? We cannot.
We're, I already asked, we're not allowed to do it ourselves. They, while they thanked us for offering, we're not allowed to do it ourselves.
What are they gonna do with it? Because they know that.
They said sometime late this summer, early fall.
Early fall. Early fall, yes.
Right in the middle of the summer. Yeah. The problem is they didn't get started on time, which they missed, they totally missed the big set of ties to do the lower half. And so it's getting scratched until then.
Missed the boat on that. Oh, they were actually.
They need to.
They actually were gonna do the lower half? Well, I thought they.
There we go.
It's a lot better than it was, isn't it?
Yeah, they, they just scrapped the lower half and replaced what?
When you sit next to her, that's what happens.
Yeah, I'd say so. I think maybe we have to rearrange a little raffle room. Okay.
But that means we need to put cones here and here. We need to make sure we have proper signage.
That's right, proper signage. And someone, uh, public comment, is it we're going into, or, does that come after the assessors meeting?
Well, no, public comments now, then you'll close your slideboard meeting.
Okay. Public comment on any of the public stuff we've been discussing?
I think it's gonna be.
Wait, I, I.
Short change.
Yeah, you're quite sleepy when you're, when you're quite hot.
I'm perked right back up.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Of our, of our meeting?
Yes, this one.
I will make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Okay, well.
Thank you for coming. Drive safely.
Assessors meeting. It's open to the public, though, right? You're on, Jim.
Okay.
This will be short.
That's what I want to hear, short and sweet.
Short and.
There's a concert at the Congo Church at 7:30.
Really?
Yes.
What's your line?
Uh, Roberto Pace and Eve Friedman.
Okay.
Two of his high school buddies. He was Robert Pace.
Okay.
What you got, Jim?
Okay.
All right.
Let's get through it.
It's just in the bait and.
Okay, the agenda is in front of you, I think, and, um, it's not, I'll put one up there. Yeah, there it is. Public session, two items for board review. A 120, 20 abatement, there's a billing error. The guy's, uh, called for not the landowner. So, uh, for a sum of $67.08. And then a 2020 supplement to send the billing to the correct owner is item number two. And there was a billing error there in that this is the landowner, in question. So, uh.
And then what's the third thing? Supplemental tax warrant to collect, because it's additional, it's.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's all.
Because it's larger.
You do a supplement, you have to do two extra pieces of paper.
Oh, okay.
After three. Warrant certificate and a list. And that's it.
Kind of make a motion to approve the supplemental tax subsequent adjustment and therefore document to sign their duplicate.
An abatement. An abatement.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
All, all in favor?
Okay.
All right, nothing controversial.
No.
This is done. Done and done.
All right, there you go.
Thank you very much. Any progress, Jim, on the, uh, on the finding of a person to reassess the town?
Uh, have not heard anything back.